Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning as we do a special farewell to Supervisor Rose Jacobs-Gibson. But before we start, I'd like to ask all of you to rise and join me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we start, I'd like to just say a few words about Rose, if I may, and I know she may have some comments as well. And I know there's several people in the audience that have asked if they could say a few words. So, Rose, I just want to tell you that I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you over the past eight years. And as you know, our first experience together was on a particular committee on reentry. And I remember you were so passionate about your goals, you held steadfast, saying you wanted to double the Choices Program, you saw an opportunity to improve people's lives. And as we got, kept going through the meeting, you know, and people were pushing back a little bit, you just wouldn't take no for an answer. And that was probably one of the best lessons I had, is that if you really want to get something done, you have to push for it, you have to press on with it, and you have to see the big picture as to how we're going to help people here in our county. So, it was truly a first great lesson for me here at the Board. You also saw the impact on homeowners and tenants in the economic downturn, and you held many housing fairs, and they were very successful in both pulling together numerous community partners and organizations, but more importantly, helping those people in need. You co-founded and were Chair of Heart, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, a joint powers authority with all 20 cities plus the county to raise funds to meet critical housing needs. To date, we have received over $12 million in funding gifts and pledges and have invested over $8.8 million. That meant we had about 800 affordable housing units because of you and your efforts in being instrumental in keeping it viable all these years. You know, at a time like now, we're probably going to do something very similar, but you were responsible for the first Youth Gun Violence Summit. And unfortunately, we still have that issue at hand, but you brought to light the economic costs to the county and the cities of that disturbing issue. So, we too are going to follow in your footsteps and revisit that issue since we've seen so many incidents happening in the recent past. I've also been fortunate to co-chair with you the Well-Attended Disaster Repairness Day for the last eight years, and also the First and Second Women's Criminal Justice Summit, as we were looking at gender responsive programming opportunities for our new facility. And on a regional level, many of you may not know this, but Rose was our representative for the county with A-Bag. And A-Bag is a huge job, and she's been Chair of A-Bag. And she and I were both on regional bodies at the same time, working on what's called One Bay Area, where you bring housing, transportation, air quality, and climate control together under one roof. And we were able to accomplish that in this past year, to actually even put some of those agencies together under one roof. It was quite a struggle, but we, I believe we did it. But anyway, she has been a great representative for us here in San Mateo County. You know, Rose always went to bat for the underdog, and it was no different, as she fought against high-cost, small-dollar loans, also known as payday loans. She advocated for stringent regulations and was successful with the passage of a county ordinance to do just that. She also saw obesity rates climbing. She looked, talked to me specifically, and initiated the first countywide summit on health inequities. I'm sorry, it's another Too Much Coffee, which resulted in residents becoming more active by spending time hiking in, and with the added benefit of increasing awareness about our fabulous parks and trails. She also founded the San Mateo Get Healthy Initiative, which resulted in a 5.6 reduction, 5.6 percent reduction in obesity from 2005 to 2010. And now, that just shows you with all her effort, what a great result that's been. In her last year of her term of office, Rose did not rest on her laurels, but wanted to complete the circle of her work on reentry. She understands that one of the most important keys to success for individuals returning to their community after incarceration is employment. Her amazing ability to convene 30 different businesses, county departments, and numerous community partners resulted in an extremely successful job fair attended by 250 formerly incarcerated individuals. Employment is such an important piece of the puzzle, and Rose and her staff did an outstanding job putting on a hugely successful event. Congratulations again on a job well done, Rose. And those are just a few, and only really skims the surface of Rose's accomplishment. But when you think of her name, Rose, and what it stands for, responsive, outstanding, sincere, and energetic. And I have also had the good fortune to get to know Rose the person over the years. We broke bread together on many occasions. She is fun, she is affable, she's caring, she's spiritual, and she is stylish. And she is a great dresser. And I will take you, tell you, I should have taken more notes in that department, Rose. But most of all, Rose, you've been a great friend. I know we'll always stay in touch, because I spend half my life down the south part of the county. And so, I look forward, along with my colleagues, to wish you the very best as you move forward in your next chapter of life.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to say a few words?
I just happened to.
Okay, here you go.
I was thinking that Rose and I have actually worked together for probably about, oh, in excess of actually 20 years. We really started working together when Rose was on the city council in East Palo Alto. And East Palo Alto had a significant crime problem. And she was actually a newly-elected councilperson, and I remember calling her up and saying, because I was running for sheriff at the time, and you know, I didn't know too much about, you know, if a city would be willing to have a sheriff's department go back in there. So, I had asked her if, you know, if she would be supportive of having sheriff's deputies back in that town to help them with a crime problem. She was certainly, you know, very, very willing to work collaboratively. But before, even before I did that, she worked with the cities of Menlo Park and Palo Alto and put together what was called the Red Team. And they did a really good job, but it was really, it was really a forerunner of the idea of sharing services and working together collaboratively. And she put that together with the mayors of Palo Alto, I think it was Jean McGowan, and Gail Slocum? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it was really a remarkable achievement, reaching out to others for help. And then, of course, you know, the sheriff's deputies came in, we, Greg Mux and I put together a plan that worked with the city for a number of years. And we, you know, over the years, as when you were in the council and I was the sheriff, we evolved that, that law enforcement help in a number of different ways. And eventually, what happened is that the city was able to do a lot of development. It was really things that you really pushed in the city as a consequence now has a vibrant retail center, a four-star hotel, office complex. It really is in a much different financial position than it was in the 1990s. And that really is because of the groundwork that you really pioneered. And I know you continue to be involved in, in the housing issues in East Palo Alto. The other thing is that then I evolved, or went to a different office in the health, healthcare area of Sequoia Healthcare District. And I know one of the things that you and I were both interested in was improving access to healthcare to people in North Fair Oaks. And so, we worked together to get $4.6 million cobbled together from the healthcare district so that we could have an expanded clinic in North Fair Oaks. And it wasn't that long ago, it was shortly after I had the surgery, that you and I were able to go there to break the, or do the groundbreaking. So, it's, it's going to be a fabulous addition, and actually, it's going to save money and provide a lot greater services than the current facility, because it just doesn't have the capacity. And I know you've always been supportive of people coming out of jail. And again, you know, when I was the sheriff and in the healthcare, and on this position, I've worked with you and watched you care for people who are, been released from, or newly, or I shouldn't say newly incarcerated, they're still with the sheriff, but people who come out of jail, you're willing to give people a second chance. And that is remarkable. I think that, that's really because of your Christian spirit, you know, and I know you're a very spiritual person. So, I really appreciate that about you. And the other thing I really appreciate is that you're, you know, you're always smiling, you always have a laugh, you always have a good time. I know your family as well, and we've spent time together. You are, of course, you are always, you're gorgeous, you're just beautiful, and you always look so elegant that it's just, I'm really going to miss you. The other thing is, when I first started on the Board, I sat next to you. And I didn't know what I was doing for the most part, which is not unusual. And I remember you nudging me a number of times, telling me what to do and wanting to shut up. What is basically, I can't talk too long. So, any case, feel very moved that you are moving on to another facet of your life, and I'm sure we'll continue to be connected and appreciate all the things you've done. One last thing is that the Community Festival in North Fair Oaks, the sheriff's done a great job of continuing with that, but that really started with you and I. That it was not something that, it was, it was an idea that came out of that Karen Project that we'd started, which is a community alliance to, at one time, it was called Reclaim Our Neighborhoods, now it's Revitalize. But they wanted to highlight the diversity of the community. And so, you know, closing down streets and doing all that stuff, we didn't know how to do it, so we figured it out. And it's been a terrific success. I mean, I think, that's right, you did, because they didn't want to do it. The power of the Board. So, you know, really, I think it really helped that community, and I know you've continued to be involved, and there is a community plan that you actually was, were the champion of that community plan. And I know that Warren is going to work to implement that. It's a good plan. It's got lots of possibilities, it's a great community. But I think the fact that you were able to, you know, dramatize the diversity, how vibrant that community is, I think is important to its future. And I think it's important to the future of San Mateo County. You've been a great asset, and you will be sorely missed.
Thank you. Rose, Rose Jacobs-Gibson ran for office because she truly believed in her community, and she thought that she could help those who live there. Not because she wanted personal reward, and not because she wanted lots of recognition. She wanted to help, she wanted to create a better community. Rose, you have a gift for bringing people together. You know how to sort out all the different viewpoints, you know how to help create workable and lasting solutions, you know how to keep people together in the room. You've never been afraid to make a tough decision, you're not afraid to stand up, speak out, but you always do it in a very warm, polite, thoughtful, and considerate manner. No one ever leaves mad. They may not be happy with the decisions, but they never leave mad when you're involved. And in the 20 years that you've been in elected office, you've always been true to your core values of social justice and equality and nurturing women and families. It's been my honor to know you for a very long time, but what a privilege it's been for me to serve with you the last four years. It's, it's been just such a pleasure following you and watching, watching how you make decisions and watching how, how you bring, bring items together on the agenda. And I know your work is not done, not by a long shot, I know that. So, I wish you nothing but the best, and when you need help, please call, because most of us will be right there. Thank you, Rose. Thank you.
Yes, so, Rose, I feel very fortunate to have had the chance to overlap with you for the last year and a half.
But you've had a very incredibly long and successful career in public service, so I feel fortunate that we've had a chance to overlap. Because you really taught me many things, and I just wanted to highlight two. I mean, I think it's really remarkable how you use the Office of a Board of Supervisor member to engage the community and to provide really direct service to the community. I mean, just in the time I've been here, the type of forums and community meetings you've had have just been so impressive and so valuable. They've, some of them have been mentioned with helping the formerly incarcerated, the Sugar Sweetened Beverage Forum, the Forum on Gun Violence. And, you know, that's something that, you know, you really have used this Office in a way beyond just deliberating on issues that come, come before us, or you've used in such a broad and effective way. So, that's something that I have learned from. And then also, you really taught me about the importance of really leading with your heart, not just, not just your head. And you see that in everything you do. You are, you are such a voice for the people in our community who we, we need to serve, you know, the homeless, the mentally ill, the formerly incarcerated. And it brings to mind a quote that I actually read in my, my, my little speech when I took office, but I'd like to just read it again, because it makes me think of what you do, Rose. It's a quote from, I think it's Hubert Humphrey. He said, "The moral test of government is how that government treats those who are in the dawn of life, the children, those who are in the twilight of life, the elderly, and those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped." And you've done such a tremendous job in meeting the moral test of government, and it definitely gives me inspiration as I go forward.
Thank you. I know this is a little teaser over here, but there's some people in the audience that would like to say a few words first. So, I'm going to start with Christine Padilla from Congresswoman Anna Eshoo's office. Oh, the microphone there is best.
Hi, good morning. I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Anna Eshoo, and we just want to thank Rose so much for all of the work she's done, all of your wonderful public service, and it's been lovely working with you in the Office. And on behalf of the Congresswoman, she had a flag flown over the U.S. Capitol on your behalf, and we just wanted to present this to you along with a certificate of special congressional recognition. So, thank you, Rose.
There's also some department heads and others that would like to speak, so whoever runs the fastest gets to be the first one up. Figures the Health Department would run faster.
Thank you, thank you, Jean.
Sorry, Mark.
Well, I really do appreciate this opportunity to say a few words, Mark Church, County Assessor. Rose, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you as a member of this Board for 10 years. During that time that we served together, we worked on a number of issues. And I have to say, in all my years of public service, I have never met a public servant who has a bigger heart, one who is more compassionate, one who is more caring than you. Whatever the issue was, healthcare, housing, criminal justice, you were always there to provide a strong voice for the underprivileged, the disadvantaged, and the less fortunate. You never wavered in your convictions, you remained true to your values, and you were always motivated to do what was in the best interest of the people. We didn't always agree on all the issues, but I, and I can't tell you now which issues we disagreed on, but all I can remember is that smile on your face when we disagreed. You always had a smile on your face, I always value our friendship. And as you look back on these many years of public service, I think you can do so with a great deal of pride in knowing that you have made a difference, and you have made this community a better place. And I want to join the others in wishing you all the best as you enter this new exciting chapter of your life. Congratulations on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mark.
Jean Fraser, Health System Chief. This is a bittersweet day for the Health Department. Rose, you have been an extraordinary champion for the causes that the health system has embraced. It's such a long list, and so many people have talked about them, but let me call out just a few. You've been a champion of many issues that have been on the fringes, and you've really brought them to the forefront with great courage. We commend you for focusing on health inequities and disparities, really bringing to light some of the unfairness in our system, in our healthcare system and in other systems that result in different lifespans for people of different ethnicities and in different locations. And you had the courage to bring this issue to the forefront and to really prod us to focus more on it and to bring the issue into public scrutiny. Your work, of course, on Get Healthy San Mateo is extraordinary. I think we can say nothing more powerful than that we were the only county in California to actually have a reduction in our childhood obesity rate. And it's largely because of the, again, the leadership you showed in bringing this issue out into the public at a time when there was some controversy about talking about this, and some controversy about the things that needed to be done to address it. But as always, you had the courage to bring that out, and the beautiful way of engaging people in issues that sometimes really troubled them. You didn't rest on your laurels, even, even having done all of those things, you've done so many. You've been a champion of safe routes to school, biking and walking to school, which of course makes such a difference for our children. You've been a true champion of rehabilitation for people who have been incarcerated, so many of whom have substance abuse and mental health issues. It's your understanding that these people are coming back to their communities, they are not going to be locked away forever, and both they and their communities deserve a second chance. And your support of the services that are needed for many of these people has made a true difference in their lives as well as in the communities. In that vein, I truly commend you for taking on gun violence. We know this is such an enormous issue, particularly in some communities. And again, you've had the courage to take on an issue that makes many people uncomfortable, but to bring to light what the consequences are. And even in your last year, when you were struggling with some personal issues, you took on two, two additional issues that we're so passionate about, the North Fair Oaks Plan. What a legacy you are leaving, and we are committed to building on that. And I'm so pleased to hear that Supervisor Slocum will be championing that as one of his initiatives. And of course, the fight against sugar sweetened beverages. So, I'll leave it at that. I know there are many other people who want to speak, but on behalf of the 2,000 men and women of the health system, we thank you for all of your support during the years. We wish you the very best, and we know that you will remain committed to the fight to bring health to every corner of this community. Thank you, Rose.
Good morning, Beverly Beasley Johnson, on behalf of the Human Services Agency of San Mateo County. Rose, I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you for your incredible legacy to San Mateo County in so many, many ways, your service, your professional integrity, your passion for serving those who don't have a voice in our community. Thank you for being a woman of color who has been a role model to me, a mentor, a supporter, someone who has taken me into her confidence and allowed me to, to sort of share my efforts to do really important work in this community. The Human Services Agency is a better place for your leadership, and for your leadership and your voice with your colleagues on this Board. It has been an honor to work in San Mateo County. I was so pleased and delighted when I arrived in the county and had the opportunity to meet you and to serve with you. My colleagues have said it all, have said so much about the many efforts that you've undertaken, but I have to speak about the work that we've done with Service Connect, and thank you so much for the job fair, and just for the way, the ways that you have made those who have returned to our community, you've received them and, and actually supported them in their efforts to return to their community and make a difference and stay on the straight and narrow. They thank you, and I'm speaking on behalf of that effort as well. The work that we've done in our Redwood City Office that will begin to position us for healthcare reform implementation, critical, important work that will, will make a difference for our residents in terms of healthcare enrollment. Thank you for your support, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Well, Rose, there's several of us here from the Sheriff's Office. We're here to honor you, to thank you for your leadership. And personally, I want to thank you for your friendship. I've always enjoyed our visits together, and I truly appreciate your leadership on so many criminal justice matters, and they've all been very well chronicled. And Don eloquently described our early relationship in the 90s and everything you did to help make that all possible. But I wanted to talk briefly about your leadership on, on reentry and, and what you've done and how you've helped us. And, you know, we worked a lot together on this facility project. Rose won't let me call it a jail project. It's, for her, it's never been about building a new jail, it's been about changing how we do corrections in San Mateo County, and changing people's lives, changing them for the better. And I think it was, it kind of came to a fitting climax, if you will, with the job fair. That was an outstanding day, it was a day about hope, it was a day about, you know, 200-plus people that came there wanting to change their lives, wanting to take that step to improve the rest of their lives. And you made that possible, and it, and it showed in your passion for the whole process. So, I want to thank you for that, and I look forward to continued friendship, and we'll miss you. But we all appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Could you put the timer on? There's an attorney coming to the podium.
I was told by the President of the Board, I get one minute, because she knows I'll go beyond it. Rose, on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, thank you for your leadership and your passion. Everybody talked about all the areas you've helped in, and everything you've done, and one of the ones that mattered to me the most and hasn't been mentioned yet is how you cared about victims, what you cared about those people who have been victimized. You certainly wanted to do, as everybody has said, to help those who are coming back into our community, to help those who were the formerly incarcerated. But that was in part to help them, but also to make sure there were no future victims. And part of like your efforts on youth and guns, that was all towards so we wouldn't have more victims. And that's what we see in the District Attorney's Office, and why, as my predecessor, Jim Fox, used to say about you, this woman gets it. And you do, and we appreciate that. In all these areas, you did, and we're so grateful to you for that. The heart that you have, I got to see in this chambers a couple of years ago, when we were honoring the family and the young explorer from the Richard May, Officer Richard May case, and what you said to them. And they told me later what you said to them, and how honored all of them were for what you said, and how you, the love you expressed to them. That personified what you felt about victims in our community, and all your efforts have been made in criminal justice to try and make sure that we don't have as many victims, that we have fewer and fewer victims. And as the District Attorney's Office, we are so honored to have been able to work with you over the years. You should be so proud of what you have done for the community and criminal justice. We are grateful to you for it. All I can say is, I am so pleased that I know you, and I'm so pleased I will continue to know you. You are a friend, but you are also a leader and a passion that serves as an example for all of us. Thank you, and the best.
Okay, I don't see anybody running up to the podium. That means I might be, oh, Lenny? Oh, that's okay.
I was waiting for some call for the public. I've been accused of that before. So, Rose, as an environmental advocate, I wanted to thank you for your support for not only the human side of our county, but also the environmental basis on which we all live. And you're, I do remember when, before you were elected, the efforts you were making, you know, as a regional effort with East Palo Alto, Palo Alto, and Menlo Park mayors, which was extraordinary at the time, and I think is, continues to be a great role model. And I think our county, all of our county, cities, and the county have made great strides in working together regionally on transportation and land use issues. And I think you've set the precedent for that. So, that was, it was quite an innovative effort, and thank you for that. And thank you also for all your decisions that have benefited the county's environmental quality. And I'm not only, parks and land use on the coast, skyline, the bay, but even communities that could have been impacted by bad decisions, which I'm remembering the trail, the money, Stanford's money that was going to go for an unwise trail that was going to impact communities and the environment. So, thank you for all those decisions, and all the best in your, in your next endeavors.
Okay, now, Rose, you can either say a little something first or we can, is there somebody else that would like to speak? Oh, sure, Sandra, please. Don't be shy.
I'm a little shy. Um, I couldn't miss today to be able to speak as a citizen, Rose, and really to say, and I can't, I'm echoing everything that's been said here today, so, um, words escape me, but you've always been inspiring, um, about social justice, and particularly, I think you exemplify what a public servant should be. And I think that you've continued our faith in government. When I pick up the newspaper and I see what's happening, um, I want to thank you, and particularly in the areas of social justice. So thank you.
Let's give the gift first.
Rose, on behalf of the entire board, we'd like to present you with a special gift so you will remember us every time.
That's it, well, I could forget.
I am, I am hard to forget, but just in case, when you open this up, you'll remember us every day.
Gee.
And I wrapped it myself.
Yeah, right.
I did. My first job was in the stationary business, if you recall. Wrapped many a package.
Okay. My thumbs aren't very, uh, aren't very strong, so I'm not trying to pull these apart like some people do sometimes, so.
You want to save that, right?
I'm not tearing it up. You can't tear it up.
I see that. Recycle it.
Oh, to the bitter end. Okay, that one went out the window right away. Okay, it's heavy. You know what, you might want to do it sideways because of the drops. You pull, I'll, hold on.
They always do this where it's going to be a lot of drama, huh?
I wrapped that part too.
Gee.
Okay.
Getting closer.
These knives?
No, it's not knives. Okay. I just talked about a violence summit, and she wants to know if I got her knives.
Oh, my goodness, this looks beautiful. Ooh, oh, my goodness. It's jewelry. You can read what it says. And it says, Rose, thank you for your valued service to the people of San Mateo County. 1999, 2012. This is gorgeous. Oh, my goodness.
Well, you'll need to go shopping, Rose, since, of course, you have no jewelry.
You're right, I don't. Nonworthy of a box like this. Is this gorgeous, everybody? Yeah, I like it.
Well deserved.
Beautiful.
I have a lot of those. Thank you. Um, I am absolutely speechless. This is not a very comfortable place for me to be, having heard so many wonderful, uh, comments from everybody. So it's like, I feel like I, I, I don't know what to say. I'm, I'm just about speechless. But I will say a couple of things, um, and make it kind of brief. As you know, I really have, um, enjoyed my time, um, on the board, uh, representing the residents of San Mateo County, and it has been extremely important to me that I do it, uh, in a way that, um, exemplifies what my view of, of public service really is. So I really appreciate all of you confirming that I have succeeded in, 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 in that, um, because it really is important to me. Uh, and with that, in that vein, uh, I will say to my colleagues that is something that I think is very, very important, um, that all of you do in light of the fact that, um, that, that the culture of San Mateo County could change with the, um, with the, um, special districts, um, elections. Um, and mainly because I, I, there's, there will be, there, there will be the, the chance that many people who could get elected in the future, who will view that as an opportunity only to represent a very narrow part of their, only their district. And that changes the dynamics of the decision-making process within our county and, um, in a way that I don't think many people realize it because they're focusing on, on just looking at the, um, the campaign and the election as opposed to the actual role that you're actually running for. And this role is a very significant one in which we represent so many very, very important decisions that we have to make, um, on behalf of residents of the entire county. Um, and it requires all of us deliberating as we have over my last 14 years, and it's been very valuable, having everyone given a hundred percent to that discussion. Um, and as you, and I, I'm sure some of you can imagine that, that, that can change if in fact folks get to in the mindset of, I'm just going to, you know, focus on my district because that's who's going to elect me. So, um, and I, and I particularly am concerned because, you know, uh, I represent a community that felt totally disenfranchised for a long time. So it makes a big difference. It makes a huge, huge difference. So my comments to you and my suggestion and recommendation to you is that, is that, uh, over the next two years, because there's going to be an election coming up in two years, it's really going to be important for you to really, really talk about and demonstrate, uh, the difference it makes to the people we serve when we've, and, and looking at things from, um, a county-wide perspective and not just on the district level. Um, so that's going to be extremely important, and it's going to be important that, that be demonstrated, the difference that it makes. Because otherwise, you can, you, we would have people who can run who would think they're going to just focus only on their district. And we've worked too hard for that. We've worked very, very hard, and we don't want to have, and, and any individuals coming in and assuming that they can just, you know, get paid for the same money that we've gotten paid for and only work on, only want to focus on their particular districts. So I just want to, um, say that because it's very, very important to me as I leave and as I, as I, as I think about the future. Uh, and I don't want to see San Mateo County lose the reputation that we have, to have an incredible reputation for being very well governed. And the governance starts at the top. The board and our wonderful leadership and our county manager and all of our wonderful department heads. So I think it's extremely important that we keep that in mind, um, because in my view, we can look at campaign reform, but I, I just, and it's something that we probably still need to look at, consider, but I think it's going to be extremely important for us to really take a hard look at, um, uh, what that, what, what the future holds and how we can have an impact on ensuring that, um, and that's going to be all the voters, of course, as well, ensuring that we have people who are not going to just focus only or have the impression that they, that it's okay to focus only in their, uh, respective districts because of the types of issues and, and services and the decisions that have to be made by this body. So, um, I have had a wonderful, a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful 14 years, and I have appreciated, uh, everyone whom I've served with and, uh, which I think is a good testament to the type of leadership that we've actually been able to witness here in our county. So I just so appreciate all of you. Uh, and my, this year has been a very challenging one in, in the fact that I, I, I have gone through a, the breast cancer surgery and, and recovery, uh, in my last year, on top of every, being the last year. But I have to tell you, um, uh, that I have never felt any more appreciated and loved and friendship within this county. It really demonstrates the kind of, um, county that we really have because, um, I, I, the flowers, the cards, the emails, the, um, plants, um, the prayers, all that I receive just really help you to see how, uh, what that healing process can, can be and what it can mean when you have others who are there to support you. It was wonderful how I've been able to, to experience it. And so that's why I'm sharing with you, is that it was something I hadn't experienced before, but it, uh, that type of love and, and concern really does help that healing process. So for those who don't know, so I want to thank all of you for, um, for being there for me and, um, and being so supportive and so caring. And, um, I will not, not leave in the county, so I'll be around and I will be calling on all of you. And so just know that, um, I'm leaving my position, but I'm not leaving the county, so I will not be far away. I'm going to take a short time to take a little bit of a break, but after that, you'll be hearing from me. So thank you all very, very much for your dedication and your commitment, and, uh, do keep my thoughts in mind as I, as I leave, and I am now going to get up and I'm going to walk out, um, because this is it for me. I'm going to hand, um, Warren my car key and, and the keys to the office. But thank you all so very, very much. This has been an absolute pleasure, and, um, I leave knowing that I've done all that I could do with the length of time that I've had, and I think that's the best that we can do. So thank you all.
Before she leaves, we'll take a five-minute break. We find people when they're tardy, you know.
Yes.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I would like to call the regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, January 3rd, uh, January 3rd, January 8th, I'll put my glasses on, 2013. May we have a roll call, please? Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Grum?
Present.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
President Tissier?
Here.
Okay, um, we are now to public comment. I have no public comment cards. Oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry, yes, I do. Uh, Mr. Fox, good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Tissier. I thank all of you for your service to the county in the past, and I, and hope to enjoy seeing you have a very successful 2013. And my fellow veteran, Mr. Malpe, we are now joined by another veteran here on our Board of Supervisors. So I know how deep the commitment is. Thank you, and thank the voters. Please vote to implement Laura's Law. It provides persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment with access to effective, efficient and economical mental health care, including veterans. Behavioral Health has posted a request for a $1.4 million proposal to provide healthcare services to 55 people living with serious mental illness just a few days before Christmas and just after the Sandy Hook School shooting in Newtown, Connecticut. The RFP is like the $1.4 million Family Service Agency prep contract approved last January. Both perpetuate the health system's policy of denying treatment to people living with mental illness that is complicated by anosognosia. They don't know they're sick. That's what anosognosia means. Please ask for the RFP to be withdrawn and rewritten. Laura's Law allows the mentally ill to live in the community under a treatment plan. They write and may be funded either with Mental Health Service Act money, like Nevada County does, or by canceling wasteful contracts like Los Angeles County did. Please vote to implement Laura's Law for the mentally ill who cannot speak for themselves, including our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no other public comment cards. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, it's now time to set our agenda and to approve consent items. Supervisor Grum?
I would ask us to remove, no, item number 11, not to protest or challenge, but to ask Mr. Porter to, um, kind of give us a, a deeper explanation of, of what is happening with, with the garbage collection. Um, the public, I have received many, many comments from the public that they are just confused about the fluctuation of the rates. So I thought this might be a good time for Mr. Porter to give us a, a more deeper explanation.
Okay, we will go ahead then and pull item number 11 for discussion. Um, are there any other additions or deletions? Okay, seeing none, is there a most approved, the rest of the consent items?
Remove approval to set the agenda and approve the consent, consent to the agenda items except 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that action passes. So item number 11, Mr. Porter, he's right there, ready.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Holland, Mr. Malpe, and Mr. Byers. Staff is before you today recommending that your board set a public hearing date for adjustments to garbage rates for County Service Area 8, which primarily encompasses the North Fair Oaks area. Um, the reason for the increase in the garbage rates are, are basically to provide the revenue to, uh, pay for the services, the increased services that we've received from our contractor as part of a new franchise agreement. And let me briefly provide some history on, on how we got to where we are today. Um, in roughly 2007, 2008, the SBWMA, which is the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, which, uh, we are a part of, it includes 12 jurisdictions, basically from Burlingame down to the Santa Clara County border, uh, went out to look for, uh, a new service provider or potentially the old service provider, but it went out to RFP for a new variety of services. And those services included single-stream recycling, which we all have a blue container now where we put everything in one container, as well as, um, weekly pickup of those recyclables and food wa, waste recycling. When you do food waste recycling, you're required to pick up your green waste bins once a week, uh, and that has to do with public health reasons. Prior to, uh, the new contract going into place, our green waste was picked up every other week. So as you can imagine, when you're picking up garbage every week rather than every other week, you have to have trucks going out there twice as often, and your costs increase. The good news is our disposal rates went up significantly as a result of implementing these new services. So SBWMA went through this process and a new provider was, um, selected, and that's Recology of San Mateo County. So Recology came in in 2011, essentially January 1, 2011. And part of the franchise agreement says that over the first three years of the contract, and this is year three of that contract, the contractor is allowed to adjust their costs based on actual cost for services. So Recology came in, excuse me, and they learned all the routes, and they actually learned what it costs for them to pick up the trash. Um, and that seems sort of easy, but it's really not. We're talking about nearly 100,000 accounts in this community. And, um, the contractor was allowed based upon their bid to adjust their bid when they really found out what it took. And they have, uh, very good software to determine how that works. On their trucks, they actually have GPS devices that track not only where they are, but it also tracks time as part of that device. It allows them to determine how long it actually takes for them to work a route and also allows people like the SBWMA and their management to look at where the trucks are going to make sure it's the most efficient routes that they have. So over these three years, Recology has had an opportunity to adjust those rates based upon actual costs. Uh, and in that, and I want to talk a little bit about those actual costs. What those are is the increased level of service. So we've gone from bi-weekly pickup of recyclables and green waste to weekly pickup. It also pays for the new single-stream recycling facility, or MRF, which is a material recovery facility out at Shoreline. If you haven't had an opportunity to get out to Shoreline in San Carlos, I encourage you to, to go out there. It's quite an operation. Those blue bins get dropped off at Shoreway, they go on a conveyor belt, and the different types of materials are automatically sorted and then, um, packaged and sold for their, uh, essentially content value. So that operation occurs over at Shoreway. That's a new facility and there's new equipment. So part of what we're paying for here is the debt service on purchasing that facility as well as depreciation costs for the equipment. As you can As you can imagine, those conveyor systems take quite a beating, and they need to be replaced about every 15 years, and that costs roughly $12 million. So, you need to depreciate those costs over time, so that in 12 years, we're not looking at a big expenditure at that time. The other factor that is part of the increase in cost is the labor agreements that the new provider has basically adopted from the old provider. Those collective bargaining agreements expire very soon, so there will be new labor agreements put in place. As I mentioned, the contractor has three years to adjust costs. This is the last year. In the future years, so years four through 10, because this is a 10-year franchise agreement, the allowable revenue increases will be based on an index. So, if you can, I, there's several indexes, but the easiest way to think about this is the Consumer Price Index, because many of these indexes are tied to CPI. So, in the future, the rate adjustments will be much more predictable and much less than they have been up to this point. The final thing I would like to add is that the reason why this was all done was not only to increase the amount of recycling, but to really be forward-thinking and look at what the state is planning for the future. The state has come out with a 75% diversion goal, which is, at this point, a goal, and it's a statewide goal. But if you'll recall back in, it's been a lot of years, but back when the 50% goal went into place, it was a goal as well, and now it's mandatory. So, what the SBWMA has done is it has set itself up to meet the 75% goal by providing the tools and the facilities necessary to really improve diversion within our area, within our 12-city area. So, that is really why we have these big adjustments over the past few years. I can say that those adjustments will become less large and more predictable based upon the new indexing method that'll go into place next year. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Carol, did you have some questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. I, I hope that people will see this on, on the replays of the meeting, and perhaps have a better understanding, so I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, for that presentation. I'm just curious about a couple of things. Number one, I'm sure that you were in the community and noticed the community about these rate increases, given the fact that you were at the North Fair Oaks Community Council meeting, and I think explained it pretty thoroughly. But could you just talk about that noticing and letting people know the rationale for those increases?
Certainly. If your board approves this item, we will set a public hearing for late February to adopt rates. But part of what we do as a department is we send out a notice to all customers advising them of what that rate adjustment is. And in the North Fair Oaks area, it is 6.1% for residential customers and 2.6% for commercial customers. So, we'll send that out, and we'll explain to them what the rationale is for that rate adjustment, and we'll provide all the information in there. It also provides the community an opportunity to question, ask us questions, as well as protest that rate formally to your board. And it provides instructions on how to do that. We've had staff at the North Fair Oaks Community Council, I believe Jola Mariana, our solid waste coordinator, will be there at an upcoming meeting as well, to go through this explanation in more detail to the council, and provide an opportunity for the council, as well as the community, to have a chance to ask more detailed questions of our staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Pine?
Thanks, Mr. Porter. There's been some discussion in the press, perhaps a month or so ago, about some of the cities suggesting that there be some kind of ad hoc group put together to just kind of take a look at rates. Do you have any updates on anything that's happened in that regard?
Through the President, I have not received any updates in that, along those lines. I'm not clear whether that committee has been formed yet or not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we still have to act on this items?
I would move approval of item number 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, seeing no opposition, that passes. We are now to our item number one, which is notifying all of you that at 6:00 PM, we will have our reorganization of the Board of Supervisors at Terranova Theater, which is at Terranova High School, at 1450 Terranova Boulevard in Pacifica. That will be my last meeting as your chair, so don't miss it. And it says there'll be some remarks that will happen too. And then, we are now to our regular agenda, County Manager's Report. Mr. Malpe?
Madam President, members of the board, no report except to wish the board a Happy New Year and to congratulate Mr. Slocum on your new position.
Thank you, Mr. Malpe. Under Board of Supervisors' report, Supervisor Groom.
No report.
Supervisor Horsley.
No report.
Supervisor Pine.
No report.
Supervisor Slocum.
No report.
Okay, well, you know, once again, I get that last word. Well, first off, as was mentioned by Mr. Fox, I would like to join in memory of the victims of Newtown, Connecticut, and just have a moment of silence. Thank you. And I also want to let you know that on January 26th, it will be at the Expo Center, it may be in other cities, but at least the Expo Center. We are doing a gun buyback program with the Sheriff's Office, Congresswoman Spear, and my office, so we encourage people to bring unloaded guns in their trunk to that location, and we will be sending out flyers and more information as to the exact time. And also, shortly thereafter, we will be doing a gun violence summit of sorts, myself, Supervisor Horsley, and Congresswoman Spear as well. So, stay tuned, there will be more that we want to work on under that subject matter. And I do have a speaker card for Mr. Fox.
Thank you very much, President Tissier. And your reference to the Sandy Hook, I have only one adjourned memory, but I think it's a significant one. The first victim in Newtown, Connecticut, was a caregiving mother who was keeping her adult child in the basement of her home. And so, when you hear the number 26, think of the number 27. She is actually the first victim. We need to start reaching out to our caregiving family members and giving them the tools to make sure that another Sandy Hook doesn't come again. And well, and Laura's Law is one of the tools that is available to family members in Nevada County, in Los Angeles County. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have closed session, so we will move into closed session, and we will come back after to report out, and we will continue our meeting also this evening in Pacifica for the reorganization. Thank you very much. We are now back from closed session. I'm going to ask our County Council, Mr. John Byers, if he would report out, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The board did meet in closed session to consider the items identified on the agenda, other than the Ortiz Works compensation matter, which will be considered next week. The board took no action.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. And just a reminder that at 6:00 PM this evening, we're going to have the reorganization of the Board of Supervisors at Terranova Theater, at Terranova High School, at 1450 Terranova Boulevard in Pacifica. We hope you can all join us. Thank you very much.